There he is, there's Lamont, that's what I.
Okay, Mr. Manzi, if you're ready to go live, we are too.
Yep, we are live.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, and I would like to call to order the May 25th meeting of the Common Council. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Are we going to salute the flag? Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Salute the flag.
Okay, well, I was gonna do it after you called the roll, but.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Langella.
Present.
And congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Satchinelli.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Huberman.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Ms. Revellus.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kites. Mr. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Serenades.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fourteen present, you have a quorum.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Now, if you will all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 11, 2021. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Shanahan. Any corrections, omissions, deletions, additions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted?
Aye.
Any, any, any opposition? And any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next item is public participation. Mr. Manzi, do we have anybody wishing to address the council?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, but if you would like to address the council, please raise your hand electronically now, and I will allow you to speak.
I don't see anybody with their hand raised. Is there, Ms. King, do we have any correspondence that you've received?
No, Mayor.
Any councilperson, have any councilperson received correspondence which needs to be read into the record? Seeing none, we will close public participation, thank you. There are no resignations or appointments under my remarks, just briefly. First and foremost, and thank you, Ms. King, I was going to recognize the recent marriage of our own councilperson, Manny Langella. Congratulations, and a round of applause is certainly in order.
Thank you, everyone, really appreciate that.
So again, congratulations. Next, we have, coming up this Sunday, we have the Rowayton Memorial Day Parade, starting at 12 o'clock at the Rowayton Civic Center. The following day, we have a, the Norwalk Parade, starting off at Vets Park at 10 o'clock in the morning. And everybody, all the councilpeople are always invited to join in the march. The, we've also, we've also scheduled, I believe, five, at least five, summer concerts. One will be held at the Vets Park, and one will be, and four will be held at Calf Pasture Beach on subsequent Wednesday nights. So we're trying to start those concerts up again. And what I, what I wanted to mention also, we know this is the first, the year anniversary of the death of George Floyd, and appropriately so, we led, we started off our Led By Us group, starting off with Norwalk Speaks on Ryan Park, in Ryan Park on Saturday, announcing that the process for the Norwalk Equity and Justice for All Task Force is moving forward, and they will be reaching out to the community and finding out from the community what their thoughts are relative to equal opportunity in the city of Norwalk, and how we can do a better job. You know, there's a lot of things that we do right, but we're most interested in finding out things that we could do a lot better. And that's how you improve a community, and we're looking to make this a standing commission that will not just go away after we get that feeling that, okay, we've done something. We need to constantly be aware of and alert to what are the things that people may be feeling in our community, feeling that they're not welcome, that they're not having equal opportunity. So this is a good process, and I want to thank Mr. Daniels for being my lead on this and helping to bring in Led By Us, and I also want to thank the Fairfield County Community Foundation for paying, offering $50,000 to pay towards the fee. So that's a good segue. The councilperson Burnett contacted me earlier, and he would like to make a brief statement at this time. So, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor Rilling. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that one year ago today, we viewed along with the rest of the world, the murder of George Floyd. This unfortunate action became the positive catalyst for several movements and discussions on the topic of police accountability, as well as diversity, equity, equality, and inclusion in the economics, social, educational, and political sectors of our country. Some of these discussions and promised initiatives have moved off of the front page of the media as time has moved on. However, I commit, they remain more important now than ever before. I am encouraged by the initiatives here in Norwalk and the assistance of Led By Us, as the mayor indicated, to keep the focus on the front page, and a priority for the city of Norwalk. As elected officials, we cannot remain silent and not advocate for change to dismantle institutional racism where it exists in order to create a better Norwalk. Thank you, Mayor, and I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Is there any other councilperson that would like to comment on that issue or any other issue? Mr. Roberts.
Just want to say, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for actually forming this task force and working with Mr. Daniels. This is a wonderful task force. We all know that, you know, a year has passed, but we still have more work to do. So, thank you for committing this action. And now let's just, you know, be led by us, but actually involve not just the community, but those that come from these situations, these disproportionate situations that have occurred within the past history, and that is still occurring now, so today. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Ms. Young.
So, thank you, Mayor, for your opening remarks regarding Led By Us, and I just want to thank Councilmember Burnett for his words. And so, we have to stay encouraged, as he mentioned, and we cannot remain divided, whether or not we're on the council. Wherever we are, we have to become together as a people. And so that kind of starts with us, it doesn't end with us, but it definitely starts with us in our leadership roles. And so we have to be that, we have to model that as well. So, looking forward to working with Led By Us, but also what will happen after Led By Us is gone, because they need to move on, and we need to carry the torch together.
Absolutely, and I believe this council will be more than willing and eager to look at the product that is, is the result of Led By Us working within the city and making it a permanent process within, within the city ordinances. So, any further comment or discussion? Mr. Huberman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Young, and Councilman Roberts for your comments. We're at a crossroads, and I, I believe strongly that the, the, the move that's being made with Led By Us is a positive step forward and one that I applaud, and it means that we need to take a deep, hard, long look inward at ourselves and what we do and what our systems are and how they affect those around us. And I hope that this action will lead to action and lead to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huberman. Any other comments? Okay, Council President Satchinelli.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have no resignations or appointments under the council agenda, so we'll move straight to the consent calendar, which is going to be read by Mr. John Kites.
You, Mrs. Satchinelli. Okay, let's get this going. Item A1, under Recreation and Parks Committee, is to authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter an agreement with Alzheimer's Association, Connecticut, Chapter for the Use of Calf Pasture Beach, for the Walk to End Alzheimer's to be held on Sunday, October 10, 2021, from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m., set up to begin at 6:00 a.m. with teardown no later than 1:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 10, 2021, estimated attendance 1,000. Item A2, authorize Harry W. Rilling to enter an agreement with the Norwalk Symphony Orchestra for the use of Cranberry Park for a Pops concert to be held Sunday, September 26, 2021, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., set up to begin at 9:00 a.m. with teardown no later than 8:00 p.m. on Sunday, September 26, 2021, estimated attendance 1,000. Item A3, authorize Mayor, the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter an agreement with the NICE Inc. for the use of Oyster Shell Park for the Fifth Annual NICE Festival to be held Saturday, July 10, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., set up to begin at 5:00 a.m. with teardown no later than 12:00 midnight on Saturday, July 10, 2021, estimated attendance 500. And item 3B, approve the use of the Showmobile by NICE Inc. for the Fifth Annual NICE Festival to be held Saturday, July 10, 2021, from 6:00 to a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item A4, authorize Harry W. Rilling to enter an agreement with Gordon Fine Arts LLC for the use of 50 Washington Street Plaza for their annual Sono Arts Festival to be held on Saturday, August 7, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Sunday, August 8, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., set up to begin at 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, August 7, 2021, with teardown no later than 7:30 p.m. Sunday, August 8, 2021, estimated attendance 500. And now, moving on to A8. And to approve the use of Cranberry Park Pavilion and surrounding grounds on June 16, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the P Tech graduation picnic, estimated attendance 30 people. Item A9, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement with Gordon and Fine Arts LLC for the use of Matthews Park for their annual Norwalk Arts Fest to be held on Saturday, June 26, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Sunday, June 27, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., set up to begin at noon on Friday, June 25, 2021, with teardown no later than 7:30 p.m., June 27, 2021, estimated attendance 400. Item A10, to approve the use of the Cranberry Park Pavilion, 1, and immediate surrounding grounds by the Norwalk High School Parents Club for a graduation senior picnic to be held Wednesday, June 16, 2021, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., estimated attendance 100. Moving down to the Finance Committee, we have item B1, that's to accept and approve the Report and Claims Committee dated May 13, 2021. Item B2, for informational purposes only, the Narrative on the Tax Collections dated May 13, 2021. Item B3, for informational purposes only, is the Monthly Tax Collector's Report dated April 2021. Item B4, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute the Grant Assignment Certification SFY 2022, Assigning State, Connecticut, 13B-38BB Elderly and Disabled Demand Responsive Municipal Grant Program, appropriate portioned funds to operation of transportation services, coordinating entity Norwalk Transit District, City of Norwalk General Fund Budget Gains to Elderhouse 18,000, and grants to the Norwalk Senior Senior for $390,000 for fiscal year 2022. And item B5, Resolution Making Appropriations for Various Public Improvements, aggregating $31,416,972 for the FY 21-22 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $31,416,972 general obligation bonds of the city to be certain appropriations in the FY 21-22 capital budget. Item B6 is the Resolution to amend the Resolution to increase the appropriations and bond authorizations for various public improvements by $550,000 for capital projects for the sixth taxing district. Item B7, authorize Mayor execute Amendment 1 to the Master Lease Agreement for Office Copiers with TG, TGI Office Automation to execute a four-year extension to their master agreement for a total amount not to exceed $268,505.21. Now, moving on to Health and Public Safety Committee, that's item C1, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary to enter an agreement with Power Phone for system upgrade and software licensing. To Community Services and Personnel Committee, and first is item D1, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a program support agreement between the City of Norwalk and Connecticut Institute for Communities, Inc. for funding support, monitoring and reporting for the early Head Start and Head Start programs in the amount of $500,000. Item D2, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary to receive child daycare grant funds allocated to the City of Norwalk from the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood for state fiscal year 21 and 22. Moving down to item D4, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement between the City of Norwalk and Family and Children's Agency to serve as the municipal agent for the elderly effective July 1, 2021, for a two-year term in the amount of $150,000 yearly. And now, moving on to the Public Works Committee, and this is item E1, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to obtain and accept a trail easement upon 40 Cross Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, and more specifically, depicting on a certain survey map entitled "Map Depicting Easement" to be granted to the city here in Norwalk over the land of CPI, AHP, Street Mob Owner LLC, 40 Cross Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, scale 1 equals 40, prepared by Martin Surveying Associations, 201 Christian Lane, Berlin, Connecticut, 06037, dated April 22, 2021, and that is the consent calendar, Mr. Satchinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Kites. We'll take a roll call vote. Councilperson Greg Burnett.
Aye.
Councilperson Dominique Johnson.
Aye.
Councilperson Manny Langella.
Aye.
Councilperson Nick Satchinelli.
Aye.
Councilperson Barbara Smith.
Yes.
Councilperson David Huberman.
Aye.
Councilperson Kadim Roberts.
Aye.
Councilperson Diana Revellus.
Aye, woman, aye.
Okay, Council, Councilperson Darlene Young.
Yes.
Councilperson John Kites.
Yes.
Councilperson George Theredes is absent. Councilperson Tom Keegan. Councilperson Jared Serenades. Councilperson Tom Livingston.
Yes.
And Councilperson Lisa Shanahan.
Yes.
That's unanimous. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Satchinelli. The first item to be moved is under Parks and Rec. Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A5, we're going to actually move A5 and A6 together, but we'll be voting on them separately. So, item A5, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary to purchase and acquire the building's deck platform and other appurtenance structures at Calf Pasture Beach, commonly referred to as, referred to as the Norwalk Sail School from Norwalk Small Craft Safety Training Program, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $25,000, account number noted. And A6, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a lease agreement for project number 4094, sailing instruction and seasonal non-motorized watercraft rental with Norwalk Community Sailing.
Ms. Young has moved the items. Discussion, Ms. Young, would you like to make a comment?
So, we have Ken Hughes here, who can speak to both of those issues, and I think the sailing school representative may be on the call as well.
Correct.
Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, back in early winter, the city decided to go out for an RFP for a new operator for the current sailing school located at Calf Pasture Beach. Part of the thinking was that before we actually went out for the RFP, it would be nice if the city actually purchased a building that currently exists, which has recently, recently been rebuilt after several of the hurricanes that we had down there. And that, that was paid for, at the time, by Bruce Karl-Kaslowitz, who actually ran the sailing school. So, we had several meetings on site with the city assessor, with the building department, and also with Alan Lowe from Facilities, and they placed a value of $25,000 as the value of that building. So, we subsequently made the offer to the current owner of the building, which was accepted. And so now it appears before you for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Ms. Young, you said there was somebody else here to speak, I'm sorry.
Yes, Nojra, Nojra from the, the new sailing school is actually on here. I don't know, Larry, if you can unmute her, if she wants to kind of speak of the programming aspect.
And that would be directly to number, item six, so.
Yes, Nojra, you can speak.
Hi, hello, everybody, hello, Mayor Rilling. Thank you for having me here. Yes, I just wanted to say that we are ready to hopefully start operations this, this weekend. We have almost everything in place to be in compliance with the RFP that we're vet on. So, we were just waiting for this meeting to, to have the go-ahead, and we continue, we plan on continuing the youth program, which is the sailing instruction, as well as the kayak rentals, sailboat rentals, and adult instruction, as well as paddleboard rentals and some windsurfing equipment that we have there. So, we have the same team coming back, and we're hiring, recruiting more people with experience in, in running youth programs from education, and more sailors with sailing experience. So, that's where we at, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kites.
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone on this council, everyone in the community, knew that how great of a resource this sailing school is. And Nojra, I just want to just send a note to you that I, I didn't have the opportunity to tell you at the Recreation and Parks Committee is, is I hope that you can offer some, an affordable rate, even if it'd be once a week, once a month, I mean, some sort of rates will allow those less privileged to attend the sailing school, because I, I found that a lot of these water-related activity, activities are utilized predominantly by our prominent and affluent neighbors, neighboring towns, and a lot of Norwalkers unfortunately are priced out of it. So, and if you just please keep that in mind moving forward, so offer perhaps some discounted rates, even if it be, you know, on occasion or quarterly or wherever, if you just keep that in mind moving forward, that, that would be great.
Yes, actually, I'd like to note to that, that we are long-term vision as to, to be able to, to write for grants and fundraise. If we change our entity type into a nonprofit, then we can qualify for, for grants that are, you know, a variety of there, and we'd be able to offer more programs, community programs, educational programs that relate to the environment in conjunction with the sailing and sports and recreation. So, we definitely have that in mind to make it more popular among people that might not even be exposed to these kind of opportunities, or might not know that they exist, as well as we are reaching out already to regional associations, as such as the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We will want to speak with them to kind of expand these type of offerings to more people that might not, you know, know about them, or might not know that they're readily available. And we, you know, we speak, we, we speak other languages that are spoken in the Norwalk community. So, we're very happy and excited to have a chance to make it a more popular program that serves more people.
Yeah, I suggest also possibly a collaboration between your organization and the Board of Education, perhaps, or starting that conversation. But, thank you, I'm glad to hear that you've already are thinking along those lines.
Yeah.
Ms. Young.
I, I thought I heard a talk. So, Nojra, if you can just share the hours of operation and the length of time you'll be providing the services?
Hours of operation, we will be between 9:00 and 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. closing time during weekdays, and around the same time on the weekends that we would be providing the services. The youth program is, is during the week, during the weekdays. And the length of time, I mean, this year, we, if, if we were to start, it would be Memorial Day weekend, hopefully. In the normal year, if we continue with the operations, we could start as early as May 15, and the program could go until through September, through end of September or October 15, but obviously in a smaller capacity in terms of the staff that we would have onsite, because a lot of our instructors are students, are college students, so they would be back to their institutions, you know, after Labor Day. But we, we could still have a limited staff there to be able to offer rentals and some instruction in those non-youth camp months, so like May, mid-May to September, end of September or October, depending on, on the weather.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Um, yes, hi, Nojra. I, I'm thrilled that this has worked out and that you have been able to, to purchase and take over the school. As, as already been mentioned, this sailing school has been an incredible resource for our kids. My own, my youngest son took advantage of the sailing school year after year after year and learned to become quite a good sailor. And so, I'm, I'm really happy about this. I have a couple questions. One, will you be offering the camps similar to the way they had been run? You know, you could, you could go for a couple of weeks, one week, mornings, afternoons, all day. Will you be running it that way?
Yes, for this year, we have the same schedule available, but more, more weeks are compared to last summer, which was a limited capacity because of, because of the virus. So, yes, half-days and full-days and, and two-week sessions. Basically, there, there is the same kind of setup. We are recruiting more staff for the camp, hopefully some educators who have experience in the school systems here in, in, in the vicinity.
And then I just, you know, want to echo Mr. Kides' statements about offering some types of scholarships. Because even though this sailing school has been traditionally more affordable than some of the neighboring towns, it's still expensive. And so I appreciate that you're already thinking about that and really want to just, you know, throw my voice in there that that, you know, I'd like to see some scholarships for some some kids who really can't afford it at all. So thank you for thinking.
Yeah, no, thank you. So yeah, thank you for that. I mean, that's definitely our goal. For now, we have to, I mean, it's an undertaking financially to to be able to do this at this point, because we are purchasing the equipment. And in order to comply with the RFP and the concession fee that we offered under the RFP, I mean, this is quite a an undertaking in terms of the business proposition. So we want to get to a good place with with that and also be able to transform the entity into a nonprofit, to be able to fundraise and receive grants. I mean, that would be, you know, one avenue to to be able to offer more scholarships and public programming.
I wish you a lot of luck.
Mr. Hublman, I think you had.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I sort of, everything's been said, but I wanted to say I'm very excited that you guys have taken on this task and that you are continuing the sailing school, such a such a wonderful institution. And I'm very heartened by what you're what you're doing, looking towards the future, the not-for-profit model and the idea of being able to offer scholarships or, you know, different price levels to be able to reach more of our community here in Norwalk, to give them this amazing opportunity. So I want to say thank you for taking this on and good luck.
Any further discussion? I too would like to welcome Norwalk Community Sailing. And I want to thank the council, especially the Parks and Rec Committee under Chairwoman Darlene Young and all the people that work so hard to make this happen. We knew how important it was to the community and we were able to make it happen. So thank you to the council people. So having said that, all in favor of item seven A five, please indicate by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye, Manny Langella.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. So item seven A five passes unanimously. Now we will vote on item seven A six. All in favor of item seven A six?
Aye, Manny Langella.
Opposed? Abstentions. Item seven A six passes unanimously. Welcome, Nojra, to Norwalk.
Thank you.
Now, item seven A seven, I believe, is next.
Yes, Mayor. So A seven authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement with the Norwalk Conservatory of Arts for their use of Matthews Park or Broadway in the park to be held Saturday, August 8, 2021, Sunday, August 15, 2021, Sunday, August 22, Sunday, August 29, from 5:00 P M. to 7:00 P M., each performance date. Setup will begin at 4:30 P M., tear-down at 7:30 P M., each performance date. Estimated attendance, 200. So unfortunately, I don't believe anyone is here to speak to that item, but Ken.
Yes, darling, thank you.
And also, Ken, before you begin, and I know that Barbara may have some comments or some she'd like to share as well, maybe very familiar with it, so.
Just to let you know, Kate Guthrie is here to speak.
Perfect.
Oh, perfect, good.
Yes, I'm here. And actually, Danny Loftus George is here as well. He is the president of the Norwalk Conservatory of Arts.
All right, you are both unmuted.
Hello.
Hello.
How's it going? I'm Danny. I'm the president of Norwalk Conservatory of the Arts. Thanks for having us here. Happy to answer any questions. We are so excited to bring Broadway in the park and build something for Norwalk and our community.
Thank you. Want to share a little bit more about what what that entails. It's new and we thought it would be great to be able to have this opportunity to have you all give us a bit more detail about what this is going to be like for our residents.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're a new college conservatory that is opening up in Norwalk in August 2022. We'll welcome our first class. We are super excited to grow our community base here and and bring more arts to Norwalk. And one of the things we wanted to do is, you know, create something for the community. After COVID has been so crazy this year, we really wanted to give back, to produce a concert and to bring more of the arts and more of Broadway, which is in our, you know, down the street to to Norwalk. We want people to get excited about the conservatory and the performances we'll be able to offer the community moving forward. So I am a Broadway actor who is a new transplant with my husband and son to Norwalk. And we wanted to produce a concert, and we are producing a concert hopefully in the park, where we would bring in a ton of different Broadway actors to sing Disney music for families.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, would you like to comment?
Well, I'm I'm thrilled about this, you know, just being a Broadway fan myself. And I was wondering, you know, are we, is it going to be musicals? Are we focused like?
Oh.
Kind of thing. And so we're so we're talking Disney now for this one.
Yeah, now now you're talking my language. So it is Disney, but it's Broadway Disney. So we work with Disney theatrical on a number of projects. So what we're doing is we're bringing specific show tunes from Disney shows, Mary Poppins, Little Mermaid, The Lion King, et cetera. And we're bringing a lot of Broadway actors that are actually playing those roles or have played those roles in the past, like the woman who's currently playing Jasmine in Aladdin on Broadway is going to come out and sing some songs from Aladdin, et cetera, et cetera. We're just as excited.
I'm thrilled. And I and I just, I agree with you, just in terms of coming out of COVID, there's nothing better than singing and dancing to make us feel good. So I'm really excited about this and welcome to Norwalk.
Thank you so much. So happy to be here.
Any other comments, Ms. Young? Did you have anything else to add?
No, I just am excited to have this new opportunity here for young people. My Barbara's enthusiasm at our at our caucus has got me excited, too. So I'm happy that we're having this this summer. I do want to know, is this free?
So we are charging $15 for adults and $12 for children. Any children under the age of five are free.
Ms. Revellus? And then Mr. Roberts.
Is there any, I know it's Disney, but there is there diversity within the people that are performing? And is it open for maybe children to perform or learn as well? When I say diverse, I mean, black and brown and different cultures.
Yes, ma'am. So my father is from Lebanon, so BIPOC representation is incredibly important to me and to the conservatory. So the I wouldn't say majority, but about half of the performance performers are people of color like myself. And that's that's incredibly important that we are able to show people on stage for young artists and young children everywhere.
Is there, is there music, is there music towards that as well? And is there, and in future, is there lanes for our children to maybe get to know you guys? And like, maybe if they have interest in that, like, I know it's just Disney, but like, are they, you know, Lion King is a good one, I guess, but is there more innovation in creating diverse performances?
Absolutely. So, you know, for for us, it's it's following the Disney canon. I I'm a firm believer that the material doesn't need to be belong to to a certain group. I actually feel that anybody should be able to sing any songs. For instance, I have the woman who's playing Maria. She's a black woman in West Side Story on Broadway, coming out to sing as Mary Poppins. I feel like it's very important that we set students up and young children up to see themselves in many different roles, not just ones that are typically played by a certain race. We want to open up their eyes and their imaginations as much as possible.
I appreciate you dealing with me.
Yeah, I'm so excited. You know, I I hope you can give us feedback and be involved. For us, you know, we are also doing a number of things moving forward. We are hoping to have a lot of classes for for the community. You know, we we are a college program and that is our main focus. But we hopefully, as a not-for-profit, will have the resources to offer a ton of programming for local children and for community. That's incredibly important to us.
Mr. Roberts?
I too definitely look forward to this. I'm a big Broadway junkie as well. My favorite play is Phantom of the Opera. So with that being said, and not only, and especially with Diana De Stacey, it not only gives the kids hope that they can not just be a basketball player, a teacher, but they can actually be in art, modern art, music art, theatrical art. So this is actually something big that, you know, the youth will definitely grab. And, you know, one day say like, hey, I want to be on Broadway. I want to be a singer. I want to be an actor. So this is something that, you know, is detrimental to the city for the youth. So I definitely look forward to this.
Thanks. It's so important that they see themselves up there. You know, I I didn't necessarily feel that way just personally when I was growing up. So to be able to create that and create it so close to New York City and in our town is really exciting.
Any further discussion, Ms. Young?
And and as you've heard, you know, all of our council members are concerned about costs being a hindrance for folks. And so if at any time there's an opportunity, I know that it's $12, but $12 when you've got three or four kids can be an issue. So anytime that you can make sure that you're including the community that cannot afford such events or creating opportunities for them to participate, we'd appreciate.
Absolutely.
Any further comment? Well, I too am excited about this program and I look forward to seeing some of the performances. And the council people here know that we have an amazing, amazing talent in the city of Norwalk. If you've only had the opportunity to watch the plays at Brian McMahon High School and Norwalk High School and watching some of the plays that are presented in the middle at the middle school level and see the growth between middle school and high school. The choreography, the singing, the acting is just absolutely amazing. So I'm looking forward to it as well. So now we'll take the vote on item seven A seven, which was moved by Ms. Young. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Thank you and welcome to Norwalk.
Oh, wonderful. Thanks.
Thanks so much. But listen, you all have to be there now. So I expect to see y'all at the concert.
Oh, we will.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda that was not on consent is item seven D three. Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion if I may speak briefly. I would like to do that. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary for shared space license agreements to regional social service providers selected by the Community Services Department to provide services and assist residents in City Hall.
Ms. Smith moved the item and wishes to make a comment.
Yeah, just before I turn this over to Lamond Daniels, our chief of community services, to explain and maybe give us a slight, a brief presentation. I just want to highlight the work that the Community Services Department has been doing under Mr. Daniels' leadership. You know, just, you know, the items that we approved tonight on consent are professionalizing our contracts to create a mechanism for monitoring and reporting to the city and accountability to our taxpayers. So I really commend the department for for doing that. And I just want to make sure that there's an awareness about that. And then most importantly, you know, working so hard, particularly during COVID, to meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. You know, it's, I think that, you know, you've just done a terrific job, Lamond. So thank you for that. And I just want to want to highlight the work that you've done. And now this, you know, what you're going to tell us about is just bringing in services to to Norwalk that are regional, where Norwalkers have to go out of town and it makes it really difficult for them. So at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to you, Lamond, to explain what we're doing.
Thank you. And I'm not sure who's our I T, but I would like to share my screen. Thank you. So good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the common council. And so as 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 my chair for the Community Services Personnel Committee has indicated, I think we all can agree that we've learned a lot and seen a lot with COVID and how it has impacted this, how it has impacted our community on all levels and also how it also exacerbated the needs for those who are already struggling pre-COVID. And so over the past year, as we continue to identify the support services, work with our nonprofit partners, we also learned that there are several regional programs or services that are offered where the city of Norwalk is what they call the catchment area, meaning that the service is provided to Norwalkers, but you would have to travel to the larger catchment areas, which for our region is Stamford and Bridgeport. And so today, what I would like to just briefly, I think I have two slides. I normally have like 100 of them. But today, I only have two slides just to elevate and amplify, and then I'll answer any questions, that the specific community services, which we're calling Nonprofits Wink Space Initiative, it's just that it's really identifying those regional programs that do exist, but they exist in neighboring towns where Norwalkers have to travel. And even as Councilwoman Darlene, and I've been hearing the sentiment that that whatever we provide and whatever we do for our residents, we also want to do a laser focus in making sure that even our most vulnerable. And what can we do to remove those barriers, whether it's financially, whether it's scholarships and so forth, as was discussed just momentarily ago. And then as as the mayor mentioned, we're we have we have launched the Equity and Justice. So I think it's just amazing how this is all interconnected. It's about providing equitable opportunities for Norwalkers to get the services they need. And this falls under equity, because what I'm asking you all to approve is to allow my department to identify specific services that are regionalized and go into a leasing contract, which Corporate Counsel has identified, to allow you space. And that space is free through my department specifically for specific services. And so just to give you a quick, the state from a social service perspective is is divided into five regions. And so you see the wonderful star on the city of Norwalk, but you can see from Stamford to Bridgeport, for some of our residents, that can be a lot, a cab, a train, Uber, Lyft, to travel to another city, especially if they already challenged and have, you know, are vulnerable. That extra $10 to get to another city to to get services can be problematic. And then what we've also learned, many of our residents don't know that the service is available, but you have to travel to Bridgeport. So what I'm proposing is that in my assessment and analysis, I have identified some of those regional programs. I've been in conversations with them to really ask them, would they consider coming to Norwalk, partnering with the city's Community Services Department to ensure that the services that are members of our community are entitled to, are eligible and meet the criteria? Or just to ensure that if the services are designed for our region, which includes Norwalk, we want to highlight, amplify, and bring awareness that these services are available to you. So this, these four bullets are just services that I've identified, and they are attached to organizations that I'm in conversation with. And we have beautiful space at City Hall through the through the restructuring, and I have office space. So it's really, it's like shared space. So for example, one day it can be workforce development, another day it could be the rental service program. So we'll work on a schedule to figure out how to make that happen, how to make sure we're communicating with the nonprofit community. So residents know, but more importantly, more importantly, removing barriers and bringing those services that our Norwalk residents are eligible for because of the catchment regional program and making sure it's in our city. So today I submit to you that this is a program that my office, specifically me, will be running. to you that this is a program that my office, specifically me, will be running, maintaining. We are looking at the spaces that work with facilities for the old conservation area. They will still come through the Community Services Department, so we will be able to track. We will be able to know who they are and also just build that relationship. And also, though, because I can imagine this will also be first timers of coming into receiving these specific regional services, but we want to make sure and take advantage of, meaning our residents say, are you aware that in addition to this regional program that is being offered here, there are other services actually right in your city? So I believe it's a win-win, both from a department perspective, but also for bringing those services to our residents. So thank you for your time, and I'll entertain any questions if they are.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Do we have any comments or any questions? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Daniels, you know, I echo the fact that you're doing an outstanding job. I would like, if you can share, how will we know this is successful? How will we know that it's working and the people are getting the services that they need and they're not traveling? So what is the measurement that we're going to use to determine success?
Well, one would be capacity, which is usage, the utilization. So are people utilizing these services? And as I indicated, it's a win-win. So it's important that if an organization in one city is going to bring a staff person here, I'm sure they're going to want to make sure that that staff person is being utilized. So it's a joint partnership. It's a partnership with the city through my department, amplifying and sharing that this service is available. But it's also a partnership from this organization, because it is in their best interest that they continue to serve and serve our constituents. So we'll be tracking that data, Councilmember Burnett, usage. We'll be announcing some other activities, the United's platform, which will also ask us, where did you hear this from? Was it from the city? Was it directly from that organization? And so we'll be able to follow and track and see how successful our and, you know, if the program is not utilized, then we'll have that conversation and say thank you to that organization. Unless we visit it, I see it as ebbs and flows. I see it as seasonal. Right now, the hot button issue is the emergency rental program that is facilitated by Department of Housing. That organization is the only organization that can approve, go in that system and help Norwalkers identify where they are in that process. That organization is located in Stanford. So that's an organization I want in Norwalk immediately. And then we'll work with that organization to, you know, to market and letting Norwalkers know, and then track how their services and what the traffic flow is to ensure that it's worth our while to allow people in our building, specifically the organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Any, Mr. Hublman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Lamond, I have to say, your energy and innovative style proves what an asset you are. I mean, really. Looking towards the future with this, is there, has there been any talk or the possibility of perhaps a space that's not in City Hall where members of our community who might not be as comfortable coming to City Hall to try to take advantage of some of these programs and agencies?
That's a great question. And absolutely, we are very sensitive how for many of our residents, a government building can scare them. It's real, and I hear the stories even personally. At this point, we have not been able to identify outside places for these services. While there are definitely a variety of nonprofits, what we are bumping into is the legality. So what does it mean to have an outside entity come in their building? What does it mean for them? If it's a child program, it may have space. Does it make sense to have an adult program? So these conversations are most certainly being held, but it's just trying to find that right partnership that makes sense both for the regional program coming in, coming in our city, and then that host entity, that host nonprofit or host facility, making sure it's comfortable for them on many fronts. And then also, when it comes to future, the whole idea is that these organizations see the value and see the foot traffic that we want to say, hey, you need to really have a full presence and find spacing, open up a building so we can, so you can get back into Norwalk and serve our constituents. So there is a method to the madness, but we got to start small, but think big, sir.
Any further comments or discussion? Well, I too want to thank Lamond. You know, he saw a need, and he took action to meet that need. And this certainly does fall under the definition of equity and justice, because their services were not equitably accessible to all communities in the city of Norwalk. And I think most people on the council also know that every Friday morning, Lamond has a meeting of all the service providers in the city of Norwalk. He's brought them together in a format where they're talking to each other and understanding where there may be shortfalls in services that are available to our residents and taking the initiative to make those services available. But having to travel to Bridgeport or Stanford was virtually impossible for some people, and now they'll be able to get some of those services here. So I really want to thank Lamond for that as well. So there's no further discussion. All in favor of item seven D three? Opposed? And abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. This is exciting.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, members of the common council. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? I think that's the only item. Ms. Shanahan? You're muted.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I beat her.
Because Ms. Young.
Microphone tonight.
We'll give it to Ms. Young today. Motion to adjourn, Ms. Young. All in favor?
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
All right. See you at the parade.